All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for indulging me a moment. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Danville City Commission to order. Hour is 4:08. And we have one item of business today, and that is to, if possible, come down to a selection on which of our six recruiting firms, selection firms, we want to go with. Or, yeah, or interview. So with that said, Ron, I'm gonna let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor. Our very capable city attorney, Stephen Dexter, and I were talking about a possible approach to our discussion this afternoon. And I will yield to our esteemed general counsel.
Thank you, sir. We thought it might be appropriate if there was perhaps a suggested number of candidates to interview first, and if there was a little bit of discussion on that matter, then we could simply poll each commissioner for your top two, possibly three, firms. And if you wanted to make any editorial remarks about any of them as you gave your choices, you could. Or we could simply take a poll of what you liked, or which firms you liked best. And then see, there may be consensus as to what firms rise to the top after that initial conversation. So in an effort to not make the conversation more complicated than necessary, I think we can start out by saying, does the commission have an idea if they, after reviewing presumptively the packets, two or three firms in mind? We'll start there, and if so, then let's poll each commissioner on what those two or three are, and see where we are.
Okay, who wants to go first?
I'll go.
I'll go.
You wanna go?
No, go ahead, no. I'm messing with you.
Actually, there were, to me, there were four that was kinda interchangeable, but I had three that were a little higher than the others. Gov HR, Mercer, and Slavin were my three. And Narlock, if we get down to a tie, was my four.
Who's next?
I'll go next. I just, I was gonna bring forth the Mercer group, simply because I worked with them last time, and they did such a great job.
Then I'll add, my two would be Mercer and Slavin.
Okay.
And I'm open to, I'm open to discussing a third if we want to have that discussion.
Okay.
Denise, you got a...
I chose Gov HR, the Narlock, and, what's their name? Noback.
What are you trying to balance this out?
All right.
What about Rick?
So I said before, I was kinda concerned about spending money on this process at all, and it seemed good. So I'm with Gov HR. They were down there, they're all kind of in the same range money-wise, but I like what I saw with them. The fact that Sarah McGee is going to be the person that would be in charge of this project if she got the project, has a lot of experience in Paducah, and I feel pretty strongly about somebody that knows the state of Kentucky or something about it. So that's my number one. Number two, I went with Slavin. I think what impressed me there was, they did some work at Frankfurt. They had a really good brochure, they're showing off the city very well to their potential candidates, and so that impressed me, and I'll just stop with two.
Okay, well, by my tally, then, you have three for Gov HR, three for Mercer, and three for Slavin, with others receiving votes, so by virtue of that, you're already at three. Should it be your will to interview those three, then you have a consensus.
I would think that would be easier than trying to lead it down to two for, I don't see a point.
Right. I think three is feasible to set up for an afternoon of a few interviews, and that, you know, I don't think there's a big difference between having two and three. So I think, based on the vote total, I think your choice is easy, but, you know, obviously it's your choice.
Wanna make that into a motion?
I'll make that motion. Make a motion that we interview Gov HR, Mercer, and Slavin to be our HR consultant or search firm for city manager.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. See none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Do we need to talk about when we're gonna do this, or do we just get Ron or Stephen to set that up?
We had previously selected next, or this coming Wednesday, the 24th. And we had talked earlier about, with not knowing what time zones they might be in, beginning around noon, and I had communicated to all the firms, all six firms, that the finalist would be interviewed the afternoon sometime following 12 noon on the 24th.
I have a conflict on Wednesday until after 5:00. Sorry.
I have to laugh, 'cause I had one too, but I changed it now.
So, I mean, I'm comfortable with you all going ahead and without me, or I come when I can, but it's just something I cannot change on Wednesday.
What do you think, Ron, would be the feeling of these search firms to do these interviews after 5:00?
I think they all want to visit with you by Skype and to have that discussion.
Could I offer another suggestion, possibly? This day, Denise, we could record them, possibly. I mean, this is a Skype interview.
Should be able to.
Correct? If we recorded the interview, you may not, I mean, you're not gonna be able to make a decision at that meeting anyway, 'cause you can't take action.
Right.
Well, and, I mean, unless we were planning on setting a special call meeting, which I don't think we were, were we?
I don't know that that was clear. We did determine, following the interview, that a decision would be made at some point in order to give notice to the firms to come in, in the first few days of August for that final personal visit, and to sign the contract and begin work on that day.
Okay.
So if not a special call meeting, I think it would have to be, well, it would have to be a special call.
It would have. So with that being said, I think you can go about it a couple different ways. One of which is during this process, we are going to have conflicts of schedule, and some are just gonna be unavoidable. We stress the timeline crunch that we have. It would, it would be my recommendation that you proceed as planned on the schedule for the 24th, and then see what you are, if you are in agreement on, what if, if it's a 4-0, and let's say Commissioner Terry cannot attend, but you, it's clear that there is one candidate, then you could be free to make your decision. However, if there is a divide, you may say, well, let's, let's not make our decision. We have the interviews recorded, and then we can allow Commissioner Terry to view the interviews, and then schedule another meeting to make the decision.
I'd like to propose that that meeting be August 1st. It's a Thursday.
Well, we have, I have blocked on my calendar the 5th through the 7th for in-person HR firm interviews, but we decided we're not gonna do that, right?
No, you will, but that will be the, when you make your selection after the interviews, you will have the goal of scheduling the in-person interview, and after that interview, offering the contract. So really, the in-person interview will be a confirmation of what you select from the Skype interview. You won't bring in two firms. You will bring in one firm to interview personally, with the goal of, if it confirms what your inclination was from the Skype interview, that you would sign a contract after that special call meeting on the 5th, 6th, or 7th.
Which, for all intents and purposes, is more of a formality than it is anything.
That's correct.
Unless they come in and trip all over themselves, which is not gonna happen.
That's right. So what you would be doing on Wednesday would be selecting the firm to fly in for an interview, and that would be your action.
But we, we can't take that action that day?
No, you can.
You can. So Wednesday, Wednesday, we're going to have Skype.
That was the plan.
Three, starting at noon. And I'd like to get that done in succession, if we could, without a lot of break in between. And, and so we'll have a second agenda item to come to the conclusion, if we can.
That's right. You would take action on them, the action would be just the selection of a firm to bring in for a personal interview.
Order, kick it to Denise.
Or, or kick it to another meeting, if you can't make your decision, right?
That's what I was gonna say.
If it's not clear after the Skype interviews, I'm just saying, if it's as clear on this, after the Skype interviews, that one firm rises to the top, why wait? But if it's unclear, then you may want to wait.
I would, I would like for Commissioner Terry to have the same Skype opportunity and, and as we have.
What about the next day? What's, 25th?
I'm, I'm out.
I can't do 25th.
I'm tied up with some intense real estate training for three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of this week and next week, eight to five.
Can we, can we try Wednesday at 5:00? I'm not opposed to that.
Wednesday, what?
This Wednesday, the 24th, 5th.
What about Friday?
After everyone's been...
What about Friday?
I can't do Friday.
Okay.
I can do Friday.
Well, yeah, I wonder about...
What about Monday, the 29th?
When we Skyped with city manager candidates, we did that after 5:00.
If you wanna do, if you wanna do, if we wanna meet on Monday, 4:00, 5:00, whatever y'all wanna do.
The 29th?
29th.
29th.
As Attorney Dexter said, we're always gonna have conflicts, I won't be here Monday.
But that's just to make a decision after everyone has seen the videos, correct?
Right.
Well, yeah.
Are we pushing it too far out, Stephen?
My opinion is you are.
Yeah.
And I under, and I say this with all due respect, but, you know, when we, we're gonna set it as tentative calendar, and it's gonna be hard, things are gonna come up, which I understand, and I'm sensitive to and appreciate, but at the same time, if they're, like you came in today, for the top three were clear, and I'm just saying, if you have, if, even if you want to just take the interviews on Wednesday and delay that meeting till, you know, to give you, to Thursday night, which would push your, allow you a day or that evening to look at them, and then you could decide, I mean, I think that's fine. I just think it's, it's gonna be important, and our conflicts, as we go along, are only going to increase. So a week or two here is gonna, again, push us towards the very end of November, which is Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
And then we're into December, and we know we're gonna find another hiccup along the way.
So we're gonna have three Skype interviews on Wednesday, which Denise can look at maybe Wednesday night. I'm wondering if the four of us can deliberate without making, and then write down our choices. One, two, three, and let Ron hold those four until you have an opportunity to look at those Skypes, and you write down your one, two, three, and see if we can come out with some majority that way.
You're gonna have to be in a public meeting, though, to make that decision.
Right. So what would have to happen is, if you have the interviews Wednesday, let Commissioner Terry look at them Wednesday night, we would have to either reconvene Thursday morning prior to your...
I'm out, I'm out, y'all. I'm out until Monday.
Oh, okay. Now, what would be poss, well, no.
Now, I can phone in. Can try that.
Well, as long as we had a quorum, I think it would be okay if you, in your absence, you could say, you could prepare a written statement that said what your top choice was, and you could provide it to us in writing, and we could have the city manager, I could read that into the record to show what your position was in your absence. I mean, it won't count as a vote, but people would know what your position was.
Well, if it's not gonna count as a vote, why would I care?
Well, so the other commissioners would know what your position was.
Why do they care?
Same reason why you care what Commissioner Terry says.
Mayor, let me ask, and Commissioner Terry, let me ask, is it possible that we could do the Skype interviews on Tuesday evening? Would you be available then, or are you out Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
I'm out all three days, eight to five. So we could...
Is it in Danville? Okay.
Yes. I will actually be across the street.
So you can be, you could be here at a minute or two after 5:00, is what you're saying?
Yes.
I can do that.
You're talking about probably...
Can we reconvene Wednesday evening?
You could. Same, I'm sort of suggesting you might do it Tuesday, Wednesday, either evening, possibly, but Wednesday evening, you could do it, but it's another three hours, possibly, on top of your full day.
I think what we ought to say, she can be here, let's do this Tuesday night, let's Skype everybody Tuesday night, let's deliberate, and let's come to a decision Tuesday night. Is that possible?
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow, and I had previously communicated to all firms, it would be on Wednesday after 12 noon, so that might or might not create a conflict on any end, it's the only thing, but I'm willing to try.
You're the one brought up Tuesday.
I did. I'm trying to find a day that anybody can be here.
And I'm, and I'm okay with letting the four of them Skype and choose this. I mean, I'm, all of these firms are really good. I can, you know, convey which one I think would be a little better fit, if you want me to, and then, just to keep it more simple, I'm, I'm fine with letting the four of them decide on Wednesday.
Thank you, it's very generous of you.
Yes, I'm glad.
There's a price to that.
Well, why don't, why don't you, I mean, if that's what the commission ultimately decides, why don't you take, if you have some opinions on which may be a better fit, why don't you express those now? Because, I mean, that is all subject to change, depending on interview, but why don't you just let them know what you're thinking? So at least it'll be on the record and in the open, and you'll be on it, they may select it.
Okay.
I mean, if you're prepared to say anything about them.
Well, the Gov HR was actually probably my top fit, top pick, because of the citizen recruitment process that they include, and also the video interviews, one-way interviews, because I think it will be good for us to have a glimpse of the candidates that they have chosen, instead of just reading a cold report that's written out. So that one jumped out the most to me, and then I believe there was, of course, I chose two others that no one chose, so.
Which were?
I believe the Noback group had that option. It was, I chose the Noback group and Narlock and Associates, because...
I picked them, they were my fourth.
Which ones were?
Narlock was my fourth.
Yeah.
But we're talking about the top three.
Yeah.
I just felt like they had a little better process utilizing technology, and maybe a different perspective than some of these others. Well, I mean, all of these firms have great reputations, but I feel like we need a fresh set of eyes to help us through this.
See, I think what you've said is probably enough and beneficial, the fact that what you value in the process are the one-way interviews, and I think that, based on that component, I think that can help the commissioners when the firms are interviewed, do they all offer it, even though they're not in their resumes, what do they look like?
Right.
And so if that's what your value is, that can be espoused now that it's known.
Is it an option with the other two that we've chosen? While it might not have said that on here, or I missed it, possibly, that, I think that's an important option for us to consider, than to read just a written report about their candidates. So.
Just a point of clarity, in looking at Gov HR's proposal, the one-way video interviews are at an additional fee that I don't believe is disclosed in the proposals, so that would be something to check in terms of what that might cost.
And I had an additional along that line, they, they talked about an optional 360 evaluation.
Yes, that too.
But, but it didn't really say, is that a add-on as well? It says we offer.
Yeah. That's, that means it's an add-on.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's one thing I was gonna ask them, that, when we, if we interviewed them.
So if we, if we choose to do those one-way interviews, which I think are important, what, what is the cost and additional timeframe and things like that?
So that would obviously be questions we would want to ask them, all three of them, really.
And I also believe that most of the firms provided the option of having the city commission identify other stakeholders to be interviewed in the development of the candidate profile, should you wish to do that. Is that what you're speaking of in terms of the...
Community process that you identified.
The community process, because in the Phase 1 position assessment and brochure development, they talk about doing that, if it's the desire of the commission to seek community input, and I think that's pretty...
Yeah, pretty standard across all of them.
Pretty standard among the others as well.
Yeah.
Yes, I think they all mentioned the community, uh, community process, and I think that's important, important level, too. Have the community involved on an appropriate level, I think is important also.
So we asked Ron to come up with his, his preferred, we want to wait and hear what those are, after Skyping?
I think so.
Okay.
You okay with that?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's fine.
I thought Ron refused to do that, though.
Huh?
I thought Ron refused to do that. I don't think so.
No, he didn't.
I thought you said you would do that.
In terms of my views on the top three.
After, after we're done, and we've made a decision, we'd like to hear your views on what you thought.
Were the top three firms, is that what you're saying?
Or maybe even your favorite.
I, I could share that with you, I haven't.
No, no, I'm asking, we're saying after we're done, so that, that doesn't, that doesn't cloud the thinking anymore than it's already clouded.
Well, I could tell you, without waiting, that you've got two of my three.
I mean, I think that's good to know. I mean, without disclosure, I think it's, I think it's good to know that in staff's review of them, and it was interesting, Ron and I reviewed these independently and came up with the same top three, in our opinions, independently, and you're interviewing two of those top three. So just as disclosure.
Okay, we're in the ballpark.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's good enough information. Denise, you have anything else you wanna share?
I don't think so.
And Commissioner Terry, I think, I'd also like to offer this to you, in the event that, now that the three firms have been identified, after, if you, if you comb through them again and have particular questions, to write them down and give them to one of your partners, so those ideas can be, at least that information can be gathered, if you have something pressing. Like the, the one-way interviews, which is a good question to have, and one that should be considered, for sure. And again, I, I don't wanna be rigid in our approach, and I'm sorry, and I hope, I don't mean to come off disrespectful to your schedule, 'cause that's not my intention.
No, not at all, that was totally on me.
My attempt is to keep, keep this train on time.
So you all are gonna Skype on Wednesday and make a decision? That's a weak side, okay.
Yes.
I'm good with that. And if I have some questions, I'll send them to whoever.
Be good to move it along, and I kinda hate you're not gonna be here, so one more shout-out. After 5:00, not good for the staff on Wednesday, or the rest of this group? 'Cause you could make it at 5:05, right?
Probably.
One of our issues, one of our issues was that it was disclosed to the firms that we're gonna interview them between noon and 5:00, so during business hours for them on Wednesday. So that was communicated to them some, you know, two weeks ago.
Are they in our time zone?
Well, New Mexico.
And Commissioner, staff could adjust, but I understand our mayor is not available that evening, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I pressed for us to get some things on the calendar, so we could all adjust accordingly, and I know stuff comes up. With that said, what else do we need to be blocking out? We're gonna make this decision, and so we probably ought to block out an interview day.
Well, we have the 5th through the 7th.
We set those aside tentatively for that meeting, not knowing, as Mayor Paris pointed out, that maybe some of the, a finalist might have something already scheduled, so we were waiting to confirm with the selected firm their availability. And if we can do that promptly, then if we generally are available 4th, 5th, 6th, or 7th, or whatever days, we'll just send a notice out, you can call that, schedule that meeting.
I'm good.
Are we all available on all of those days?
I'm flexible, put it that way.
The 5th, 6th, and 7th?
The 5th or 7th would be better.
Why don't I have down a special meeting Monday, August 5th at 2:00 p.m.?
Well, it might have been for that purpose, but we were not that specific earlier.
We just had those kinda tentatively.
So again, to clarify, you prefer either Monday the 5th or Wednesday the 7th for that personal interview, and that's good with all commissioners?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the, if we gotta do, I'm sorry. If we gotta do one in the 5th, it has to be early in the morning time, well, not early, in the, what, 10 to 2 range? I'm celebrating my 10th wedding anniversary on the 5th of August.
You're celebrating what?
And I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna be sitting down here at the city hall on my 10th wedding anniversary.
10?
10.
I said 10.
Times 5, I think.
I'm just 39 years old.
I think it's 10 times 5, isn't it?
Well, no.
So again, August 5th, 10 till latest 2:00.
No, I can do August 5th, I just wanna be, we can't start at 5:00, you know.
Right. And, and the 7th could be most any time of the day.
Yeah, 6th, I understand, with the families, any time of the day.
But Commissioner Terry said the 6th really didn't work for her very well.
Yeah, it would have to be afternoon if, if we did the 6th.
I can do that afternoon, too.
It's all right, you, you, he said he's a working man, you working girl, really?
Yeah, some people have to work.
What'd you call her, working girl? Be careful about that.
Working girl. I think so, yeah, I think so. You know, that kinda works.
We will try, subject to the availability of whoever may be selected, as you may determine to do it that morning of Monday the 5th.
Okay.
Yeah, they come in on the weekend, that'd be great. Let me ask one other question, too. This one-way interview thing is where Gov is gonna interview their top one or two candidates and share those with us, right?
So you get to choose the question, this is, the benefit is, you get to select, pre-select questions that you would like the candidates to answer, that can narrow your choice down before you make the top whatever choices.
Yeah, okay, all right.
It's just another tool, so you don't see a written answer.
Yes.
You can see some, some interaction in person.
That'll be September sometime, hopefully.
Let's hope. Yeah. That would be ambitious, if that was in September. I mean, that's probably more like October, but it would be nice.
Well, either way, from the, from the point of hiring the consultant, I mean, we're looking at a good three months, so that...
Right, they range from three to four months.
Yeah.
Plus, right, so between the six proposals.
Which is why we're trying to move this down the road.
That's right, right.
You know, I would contemplate on that August 5th morning meeting, where you have that discussion initially with consultant, you would talk not only about the candidates and the attributes you would like to see in a successful candidate, or the ideal candidate, also, he or she will want to know what elements you might want in the advertisement they'll develop, but you may get into the questions that you would want to have, you know, on that one-way interview, or other processes if that firm wasn't selected. So I see that as an opportunity, really, for a half-day, kind of robust discussion. So I see that as an opportunity, really, for a half-day, kind of robust discussion with the selected firm that morning.
That'd be good.
And one thing, to have a brainstorming session, we can provide you a blank form of these, but the form that we use in the city manager evaluation process may have some jog-your-memory or some ideas of what you think may be the top attributes of a city manager should be, and we can probably provide those, Donna, a, a blank form to you just to, ahead of that August 5th meeting. So we're, just to keep you, as a, as a next step, that's maybe what you want to be thinking about.
And certainly, the firm selected will have suggestions, too.
And, and our, our job description will sort of mirror that evaluation form as well, so that would be good to have a, have a copy of that in our hands. Ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Fire away, sir.
I moved if we go home and forget about the fact... I moved for German.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. See you at 5:30.